This conference will now be recorded.
So you want to show her the windows, is that correct?
No, I do not.
Are we someone of the...
We got a wooden hanger for you for other kids. At this rate, maybe some body. We'll call this February 22nd, City Council meeting.
Would you join me as we pray? Dear Lord and Father of all, we come to you this evening to ask your guidance as the city council, Sedalia, the mayor, administrator, council members and staff need to discuss those important issues that affect us all. We are thankful for their dedication and service to our community. We ask your protection for all of our first responders, police, fire, which department is here in numbers tonight for two very special penings, for our sheriff's department, for hospital staff, ambulance, and all who risk their lives to serve us. We are thankful for our beloved republic, the United States of America, remembering especially today, February 22nd, 290th anniversary of the birth of George Washington, who is known as the father of our country. And also this month, we celebrated on the 12th Abraham Lincoln, who kept this wonderful union together. So many have died in its creation and preservation for this beloved country. We are humbled by their service and sacrifice. And now, as we leave tonight, please protect us and our loved ones, keep us from harm until we meet again. All of us who pray in the name of our risen Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and us a strong.
We'll call please, sir ladies.
Lehman.
Here.
Oldham.
Here.
Dawson.
Here.
Bogus.
Here.
Richardson.
Here.
Cross.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
And Bliss.
So now we have two special wards, so our chief will come up and make this presentation. And I guess Commander Shaw is looking to be involved with this process also.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Shaw, this evening, we're going to be doing two badge penings for two of our firefighters who have just come off probation. The first one is Nathaniel Neville. Interesting story about Mr. Neville, he worked with us for about 10 years, then decided he wanted to move on maybe to some bigger pastures. He was a firefighter for the city of Springfield, Missouri. He was also an Air Force firefighter, was deployed overseas. He recently just came back to the city of Sedalia Fire Department. We are more than happy that he came back to us. And then firefighter Cameron Smith. Firefighter Smith has some experience on the East Coast, as well as he was recently with Lawrenceburg before he came to us. Firefighter Neville is going to be penned by his wife Stephanie, and firefighter Smith is going to be penned by his daughter Lexi, and we're really hoping we don't get any blood from that. Gentlemen, if you want to come up. And that's all we have, we'll clear out the gallery. So depending on the skill set of the individual, these two gentlemen move very quickly through our probationary period. They are given a firefighter probationary packet. It's pretty thick. It goes from anywhere from setting ladders to working extrication equipment, to hose rays, to hose advancements, any number of things. It's a pretty thick packet, and it takes an average of about six months to get through, simply because they have to practice the skill to how we do it here. Once they learn the skill with myself and Deputy Chief Shaw, we have to go over and actually check off their proficiency to make sure they do it. So it's not something that they can say, hey, I know how to do that. It actually has to be done. So it does take a significant amount of time and energy to do it. These two gentlemen were thankful enough that they already had their fire one or two under EMTs, so they were able to specifically just work on our probation packet. All right, thank you.
So we need to get a motion to approve the minutes of February 7th meeting.
So move them.
Okay.
Aye.
Post. And graphic advisory board meeting minutes.
So a motion to approve.
Second. Small paper.
Aye.
We'll call for Science Administration's Steve Lewis. You have one item.
I have a pretty, you know, a number of items that I'm kind of off the hook because Kelvin's doing the first one, I believe, so I'll turn it to Kelvin about the 2021 and 2022. Might be a typo, a budget preview.
Okay, great. Thank you all. We'll, we have several slides here, so we'll try to go through it as quickly as you all want to go through it, and be happy to entertain any questions or any discussion along the way.
Don't be shy about it if you want to question during the process, go right here.
So the purpose, what we're trying to accomplish today is we will go through a preview of the upcoming 23 budget. We have a draft put together, and we'll talk about a little bit about how we got to where we are today. But the goal today is just really to look at it from about a 5,000 foot level. We don't want to get too technical, too deep down into the weeds. What we're trying to accomplish today is get an overview of a feel for the global situation of the budget, and then that will set the stage for next meeting, Monday, when we'll come back together, and we'll have several specific items for you all to make decisions on. And a couple of the items here, a couple of the big decisions that we'll make today, or we'll talk about today. To set the stage, we kind of, I think it's a good place to start, is to start with where we're at, what we're trying to be, our missions and our principles, and then where we're at as far as the state of the city financially, how we're doing, and where we're at, what foundation we have. We'll look at some trends, specifically some big overriding trends, specifically on revenues and on some expenditures on wages. And then we'll look at the budget overview in total and see where we're at. So starting with the mission, this is the mission we have updated that for several years, so that's the same mission, what we're trying to accomplish, or what we say we are. Some of our standards or guiding principles along the way, we use the acronym of service for strong budget, economic growth, residential neighborhoods, vibrant downtown, innovative ideas for the future, citizens' health and safety, and finally, the employee excellence that allows us to accomplish all of that. Also, another place where we need to look at is what's our foundation, what's the state of the city right now? And from my perspective, the state of the city is great. We are financially stable. We have a standard and forged credit rating that was upgraded or updated again and reissued at double A minus, which is, as I understand, pretty, a very healthy rating for a city our size. And that was updated again when we did the community center financing. We have about a $44.5 million budget overall. That doesn't include my full regional health center, as the enterprise fund, and our general fund is about a $14.7 million general fund. And then the general fund, fund balance is about 65% of total revenues each year. So again, a very healthy and stable foundation for us to build upon. We are growing, we have a diverse base of job creators, we have several expansions and new developments. And over the last three years, as you all may remember, when Seska gave her annual report from economic development, over the last three years, we've added 1,398, or announced 1,398 new jobs for the community, with an average wage of about $56,000. That represents about $80 million worth of payroll, new payroll going into the community, and $426 million worth of new capital investment into our community. Some of the developments there, I won't go through all of those, but just it's kind of nice to just kind of list some of the major developments that we've had recently, over the last year or so. Also continuing that, the Katy Trail, the Downtown Pavilion, the Planet Fitness, State Fair Community, the Innovation Center, all of those kinds of things. The infrastructure updates, we've been working, it may not seem like it, but it's, over the last three years, we've got the waterline mains, that project was about a $12 million project, plus another million for the water tower repaying, but that's finally come to the conclusion, we're about to wrap that up. And the sewer lift stations and mains are in process right now. That was about a $5 billion project, as well as the central plant upgrade that's in design right now. We've implemented the neighborhood revitalization concepts, and they're being deployed now. We're doing the demolitions in-house, we're continuing with our cleanup efforts, and we've really, really been able to change that model and get citizens more engaged in that, and it's been more effective and more long-lasting. The redevelopment concepts, including the USDA partnering with them on the ability to do some of those redevelopments. The Urban Redevelopment Corporation has been formed, and we've had a couple of meetings with that corporation, and really getting its legs underneath it at this point. And then we also just recently formalized our urban redevelopment process and guidelines, and we all approved those here a couple months ago. And then we are in the process of designing, we have an architect, or two architects actually working on designing a whole block rehabilitation, and then another one working on an infill. And so those designs are in process through the corporation. We have a few of what I call game changers, and we talked a little bit about this at the strategic planning session, but just to reiterate here, you know, first and foremost, the Hecker Community Center, less than a month from now, March 18th, is the grand opening, ribbon cutting, everybody's pleased playing on being there, but real exciting for the community. And of course, that all to Hecker's generous pledge, was really got us over the hump to the point where we could put it in front of the voters, and 8 cent park sales tax increase, and the voters turned out in record numbers, or at least close to record numbers. And I was so pleased with.
It was record numbers.
Yeah, okay.
Right there.
As far as we know.
Let us live it.
But the 80% pass rate is really heartening that they are believing what we're doing there and want it to that extent, and are willing to pay for it. And then also, on top of that, the CIP sales tax sunset was removed, that again helps us make sure that we can pay for, pay that bond back. And then on top of that, we were able to partner up with the school district to expand the swimming pools, where we can have a full competitive swimming pool, as well as the lap pool, or as well as the leisure pools that are also with it. So again, March 18th, getting real exciting. Also, as far as other game changers, we've got the rail spur completed, that was a $10.1 million grant, and it's, you know, with our Hecker tenant of New Core, that really opens up the opportunity for a complete rail industrial park. The Katy Trail connection has been completed, we purchased the hangar, and we now have a really a full-blown, full-service airport, complete with maintenance and the annual inspections and all of that, overnight stories, several things that that gave us the opportunity to do that we couldn't do before. Through State Fair Community College, they're working on that Owen Howard Tech Center. The school district, the Sedalia 200 School District has just, or recently completed the Loftus Talbot Development Center. The water and sewer master plans and upgrades are nearing completion. The streetscape on Ohio and Pacific Streets are now complete, all the way through from Broadway to Pacific Street. And then urban redevelopment plan, that we talked about earlier, the comprehensive plan was completed, and now we're in the process of implementing it. And then, of course, the branding initiatives that we have started and continue to, now we've developed our story, now we're trying to get that message out there and continue to build that brand. So what's next? Keep the momentum going, attract and grow, keep up with the infrastructure needs as we develop. Housing, quantity, yes, but especially quality, and we absolutely know we need that, it has to happen, and we have been focusing a lot of our attention on it. The branding and the messaging, we need to tell our story, we need it as a rally pride and to be able to instill pride, continue the economic development, and we're getting noticed, and we just need to make sure we're getting noticed for the right thing, and that we're getting our story out in front of us in a positive light. We need it to attract and develop our workforce, we want more of the, as we develop these jobs, we want more of them to live here. We have a wide draw area that we bring people in for all of the jobs, that we would like for more of those folks to live and be here. It's especially important for the retail recruitment, and then the neighborhood revitalization depends on citizen engagement, as far as a sense of community and pride in their community. And so as we were going through this, and there were some questions that came up during the strategic planning about what that process was, where we were going with the funding this year, and I honestly just didn't do a good job of presenting that, I really kind of left that piece out. And then also, as we were doing the budget development, and as we were reviewing it internally here, there were some questions about, you know, how we would use those funds this year. So I have asked Callis to put together an overview of the strategy and plan with more specifics on needs for funding to continue to tell the story, and so if you don't mind, I will turn it over to Megan Hartman from Callis, from Callis, I'm not sure, I think it's Megan, go present.
Well, we're going to tag team this a little bit, and hopefully it all works. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay, louder. All right. I'm Megan Hartman with Callis. I've been part of this initiative since we started a few years ago, but let me get this working here. But really, what we wanted to do is give overview of what we've done, and what we have working on now, and then what we need to continue to do to grow. The opportunity and need for community branding is something that we recognized years ago, and it's a building block. And we've started the foundation, like Kelvin mentioned multiple times, we've got so many great things going on in this community, the New Core, the Rail Park, Hecker opening in less than 30 days, which is extremely exciting, I know, Steve. There's so much that we can continue to grow on. All the pieces are in place, it's time to capitalize and bring in new businesses, a workforce, get our community excited, so that we, the Neighborhood Revitalization Program reinstills pride in our community. So with that, the brand comes into place. And what is a brand? It's not just the logo and tagline, it's your story, it's your people, it's your community. We started before COVID happened, and we did a lot of research and talked to people, current residents, past residents, people that are new to the community, business owners, industry leaders, and just general population. We also did a survey of the public. And we heard that Sedalia has so much to offer. We heard people say that they forgot that the dome existed, or they haven't been on the Katy Trail, or the fair is just 11 days. There's so much great stuff that happens in our community, and we're not doing a good job of telling that story. So it's our responsibility to teed our own horns, nobody's going to do it for us, so that's the best way to grow the brand. So with that, I want to pass it along to Ivy. I'm going to try and talk loud, I don't know how. I told Megan I was just going to ignore the microphone and just yell, because I'm just a lot better at that, to be honest with you. I'm a little taller than Megan, too. So I'm going to take you all through kind of what we've done, and some of these things you all hopefully have seen in the last couple of months. But what we've been doing this past year is laying that foundation. If you guys are sports fans, this is a building year, or it has been a building year, right? We have all the pieces, but now it's time to take that building year and take that foundation and move forward with it. But in terms of the foundation, you know, we tied into community events this year, if you were at the fair or at the, you know, Fourth of July community event, a couple of different places, probably saw some of the new branding that we've been rolling out, right? We established the brand, and now it's kind of releasing that, rolling it out, getting it in front of people, getting people aware of it. Fourth of July, State Fair, Homecoming Parade, Christmas Parade, right? We created the video and released it during the Christmas parade, and really showed that out to the public, kind of released that online as well, to kind of get that online presence started. We do have the website, that was a huge and is still a huge project, that is in the process. I mean, that's a complex, larger site, it's going to take a while to build, plan to launch at the middle of this year, June, July, but that's going to be a huge foundation of this plan moving forward, a site that people can go and visit, physically see that brand, and attach it to other things. We also did a lot of actual branding and signage, right? We have hats, we are tying in with some of the co-brand options, you know, you see the animal shelter, Public Works Department, working with fire and police as well, and then a couple of advertisements, and the Shop Local Initiative, which Jolie has been really good job of championing as well, but kind of tying in those community ties. So that's all fine and good, and what's still to come means that being aware of the brand, getting people aware of the brand is just one thing, that's different than sharing it and feeling it, and actually, you know, seeing themselves being a part of that brand. So now that's what comes in this next step, right? How do we get people to feel a part of it? One of those ways, or how we do that, is a big part of that is through social media. So social media, words, pictures, video, we tease that a little bit in our Sedalia video that we released for the Christmas parade, but now we need to keep getting visuals in front of people, keep telling that story, getting that in front of people. So we created a couple of Facebook posts here, that would be examples of a department shout-out, that talks about celebrating the people in our community, talks about frequently asked questions you might get from business owners, that would push them to this new website, celebrating heritage, celebrating a holiday, tying into community, and then options for people to cross paths, Katy Trail, Park, different places where they could do that. So we talked a little bit about the video, and we have one long-form video, but what's the best way to tell the story? It's through video, it's more than just the static imagery. So with the social media initiative, we definitely want to include both static imagery and the video. So we've got a bunch of great video content that we can cut down, and we did a couple examples, hopefully they play okay. So these videos would be used on YouTube advertising, through streaming, so you think about Hulu, YouTube TV, all the different streaming devices that people are using, we can buy that much cheaper and target people in our community and within a certain radius, recommending to 45 mile radius to start, within the budget we have, and really just tell our story. So we'll have a bunch of these small videos that will have copy that come in, because you think about people scrolling on their phones or not necessarily have their volume turned on, so make sure that we get our message across if people don't hear it, and then also some stronger long-form videos that will have some voiceover and maybe some interviews with people about why it's so amazing to live in Sedalia, and what it's like to be here and just tell that story. Another thing that the Democrat does such a great job of showcasing the events of the city in the radio stations, having a regular communication, and helping them champion our brand, and then expanding it outside of just Sedalia, but look at our community. So Sedalia is more than just the inside city limits, it's the county, it's outside the county, it's people that come through Sedalia to shop and work and now play at the Hecker Community Center. So those are some of the initiatives that we've budgeted for, and we put together, you have a handout that outlines a little more detail of what's included with these bucket items, and there are two different budgets. There's one that really throws some fire and gets people talking, so let's continue what we've built on. You know, this is a building year, we started a foundation, but we don't want to just stop there, we have to continue to get that story out. So the first option is the $150,000 budget, which includes some more community events, which would be allocating dollars towards any promotional swag and materials that might be needed, also some video productions, so talking about more of those long-form videos, and then cutting it down into more short videos. And then the strategy and planning, so having us at your, just to get together on a regular basis and talk through what's going on in the community and pivot as needed. YouTube advertising, which is how the videos would be utilized, streaming advertising, which we've talked about, Facebook and Instagram, so it's more than just posting on Facebook, it's actually boosting some of those posts, so you get more awareness besides the people that like your page, and grow your audience. Public relations would be engaging with the media and partnering for the stories, and then fully managing the social media, so putting out those high-quality images, the content on a regular basis, and monitoring the reporting, and responding to comments. We also have a little lesser budget, and basically what we did was took out the And all of this is, we took the approach of what makes the most sense with the dollars and to get the community really involved, and this is what we feel makes the most sense. There's options. Do you want to go a little bit slower, or do you want to go faster? And you guys can decide how you want to proceed. What questions do you guys have for us?
Questions?
I'm, oh, go ahead. Go ahead. I'm sorry, Andrew. Go ahead.
I'm just guessing that the Hecker Center will be, we do the old things and the reception will be, will be getting quite a bit of video there. Oh, I'm sorry. Just basically, what do you have planned as we open the Hecker Center and how you're gonna incorporate it into the, I'm just curious.
Yeah, that's definitely an opportunity to get some video of the people that are there. We're gonna be there, and we can capture video and utilize that throughout the year and put it with what we already have. We already have a ton of really great footage. It's mainly drone and some footage from some of the other events, but that would definitely be pieced together for social media and YouTube and some of those longer-form videos. We do have, the Parks Department does such a great job of getting photos of their events and video of their events, and they've shared a lot of that with us. So we've used that in some of the longer videos, too. But it's a great drawing factor to Sedalia.
Yeah, that area, that day will be a great drone event, because you'll be able to probably have activity all the way from the baseball stadium all the way across.
Absolutely.
Andrew, yeah, and your social media management, it says including monitoring and responding to comments. So how would you guys handle comments that would be perceived as negative?
Um, it's a great question. You know, with social media, it's best to take it offline and try and handle it in a manner that's not quite as public, but you definitely want to fix the issue. If it's something that can be resolved, we would respond and ask them to either get in touch with us or do whatever we can to take the situation down. It is easy sometimes to get into those conversations with social media, because there's, people are a little more forthcoming with what they have gripes about. So we take a look at it and see what makes the most sense, and we'd talk with you guys, too, so you'd be part of those conversations. If there's anything that gets a little edgy, we would reach out to whoever the primary contact would be, probably Kelvin and the mayor, and see how they want to respond. And it's good for us to have the backstory, too, and we can help take the situation down.
We were talking a little bit earlier, whatever happened with the, we had kind of discussed in the process of what we were going to do with the overpass signage.
So the overpass signage, I believe, is in production. The water towers are booked through late summer, just because, that was something, too, that was a part of this budget. So those, there's like one company in the, there's a company in Missouri that does it and another company in Texas, but they're basically filtering everything through Missouri right now. And they were out about nine months to paint the water towers.
That was another one of those items that was scored in the strategic planning session. Most of those items did not score well. So they're, they will also, we'll bring them back up during the budget work session. So these, these budget options, along with those, will be items that you all can make decisions on.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions? Do these have to be taken as two packages or a community?
Absolutely not. They don't. We could take, if there's something that you like from package one, we can do that. If there's something that you like in package two, we can mix and match and change the level of engagement. It can all be changed. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. We appreciate your time.
Thank you. I guess I would, I would add to that, I guess, from my perspective, just my recommendation. This is my limited experience that, and I'm, I'm no marketing, that's not my field of expertise, but to me, sort of what I learned from the manufacturing world and my time in the private sector is this building brand is about a constant growth. It's about consistency. It's about staying after. It's about continuing to tell your story, you know, and get it out in front of and making sure that you're put in the life that you want to be put in. It's not a one-and-done deal. It's not something that you do and then you're done with it. It's a, this is ongoing journey. My, my take.
From there, again, through the 2022 planning session, we continue to focus on the why. It's easy to get focused on the budget, on the how, and the services provided, the what, and lose sight of the reasons for providing the services in first place, again, the why. So just if we continue to push, continue to push the focus first to answer why the whats and the hows are still tough choices, if they become more of a value-based or a customer-focused perspective. As this relates to financial planning, again, we're not looking at zero-based budgeting, but we're also not doing the federal government budget where they think that a smaller increase is an actual budget cut. They typically look for, how much money do I have to spend and where am I gonna spend? So we want to avoid that, in my opinion. And, and so the, the concepts of thinking lean, that anything that doesn't provide value from the customer's perspective is inherently waste, and therefore it needs to be minimized or eliminated as possible. And then the continuous improvement mindset is that it can always be better and thereby it's a journey, not a destination. Again, from the 2022 planning session in January, the data-driven decisions, we talked about the databases and all of that, the performance measurements. We talked about the five-year capital improvement plan, the three-year line item forecast, and then the department presentations that you all set through for the, each department, each customer-facing department gave their strategic plan for the year that led up to your strategic planning session. And we asked in each one of those, over those two-month periods that they presented those, why the service is needed, why should the city be doing it, what level of service are we providing now, and the strategies going forward. And that set the stage, really, for you all to go through and address the overall strategic plan for the city. We also separated the priorities by decision, our decisions by what is competing for the same dollars. So the money that's cheap, are the priorities that are competing for general fund dollars are separated out, and you can make those decisions versus the capital improvement fund, et cetera. So through your strategic planning session, there were thirteen items that were ranked, that you all ranked, and we took the average ranking in the general fund. So coming in at number one was the fire pension transition to WABAs. And we said, we basically put a number on that as two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars per year to amortize the four-point-three-million, I think it is, unfunded liability that is already incurred. That's a little bit of a misnomer as we talked there, because that's, that's amount we're gonna have to do anyway. It's just when we go to loggers, it's gonna accelerate that we have to deal with that faster, which I think is a good thing, as long as we can come up with money to do it. Dangerous buildings demolition funding came in at number two. The 353 Neighborhood Revitalization Seed Money came in at three. Four was police recruitment. Five, the non-lethal weapons and rap expansion. Six was the bike study to expand the 353 area to the downtown area. And then number seven was to add a staff vehicle for the fire department. Number eight was retail recruitment consulting. Nine, the drone program expansion. Ten, to continue the branding, identity messaging. And that's where we put in the hundred-and-fifty. But again, and we can change that number, and we've provided two alternatives here. And what you'll see Monday is, in the draft, I've included the seventy-five thousand, but that's something that council can make the specific decision on, at what level we want to, want to put that at. The medical UCB vehicle, presented by the fire department and Chief Irwin's strategic plan, the cemetery niche columbarium come in at twelve. And then finally, the city health department came in as the thirteenth item. For transportation, we only had the two items, and coming in at number one was the, the parallel taxiway, and number two was the, the Crosswinds Runway redo. The capital improvement plan, we had twenty-five items that, and I may have been a little bit overkill, but anyway, we did twenty-five items that you all waded through and ranked. The sidewalk and curb funding level at basically a million dollars with five-hundred thousand of that being offset with a grant, came in as the top item. Thompson Boulevard resurfacing came in as the second. The fire squad vehicles came in at number three. Number four was the sidewalk along sixty-five highway from Seventh Street to Liberty Park Boulevard. Number five was to design the three-station model for the fire stations going forward. Number six was the stormwater project funding level. Number seven was alley reactivation or addressing up the alleys in downtown. Number eight was Thirty-second and Limousne Lane addition improvements. Number nine was Fifty Highway and Winchester Lane additions. Number ten, sidewalk at State Fair Boulevard from Fifty Highway to Third to sixty-five Highway again. Engineer from Sixteenth to Twenty-Fourth Street upgrades or resurfacing. Clinton Road ran to Thirty-second Street. Thirteenth was downtown decorative lights purchase. Number fourteen was the bike way on Third Street. Number fifteen, extend Winchester from Sixteenth to Sacagawea Road. Number sixteen was Sixteenth Street Complete Street, as laid out in the comprehensive plan. Seventeen was the bike way Amtrak depot to Katy Depot. Number eighteen was North Harding and Boonville. Highway fifty to the airport improvements, that's really to widen that and improve that to the, it's a route there. Number nineteen was Pacific and Ohio and Second and Osage parking lots. Twenty was State Fair upgrade main to Pro Energy Drive and with, with roundabouts. Number twenty-one was sixty-five highway and Sacagawea traffic light. Twenty-two was Fifty Highway and Katy Trail Bridge overpass widening. Number twenty-three was the Monument and Wayfinding signings branding launch that we just talked about, Council and Leman. Number twenty-four was the sixty-five highway ranch at main and, and the cost share. And number twenty-five, extend Pro Energy Drive to Oak Grove. So we also looked at, again, as we build the budget, not only what you have ranked, but then also as a base, what we've established as priorities and objectives. And so staff made the assumption as we pulled this together that the objectives will continue during the coming year to maintain a strong budget with a general fund, healthy fund balance, and then monitoring ongoing revenues as, in comparison to ongoing expenditures to make sure that we have a structurally balanced budget, what we call that. Emphasize customer service and thinking lean, continue the strong budget process with fiscal discipline, generating value from the customer's standpoint. The infrastructure improvements, the focus on the city personnel and professional development, the focus on planned growth and development, continued for economic development and jobs, and continued focus on the neighborhood revitalization as an overarching priority. And just again, kind of my little speech about your budget is one of the things that, is one of the, I believe, most important things that council does, because by what you put in the budget, what you appropriate funds for sends a clear message to staff as to what your priorities are and also the community. So really, the budget does become a policymaking tool. So from there, from your meeting, we also, we went through the departments then, basically based off of what you said in your priorities, went back and pulled together their drafts and their proposals for a budget. For basically a two-week period, we brought each of the departments in one by one, and they went through with the mayor, myself, the finance director, and Councilman Dawson sitting on most of them, if not all of them. And again, we had a couple other council members that sit on several of them. But anyway, we, we went through those, those budgets line by line, talked about every, every single line and every single expenditure or every single item in there. And basically, it was their opportunity to sell or their proposed budgets. And the ranking from the annual prioritization session was certainly taken into account. We numbered those when those come out. The mayor and the finance director and the city administrator continue to review those, and I liken it to putting together a puzzle, trying to figure out how to make all of the pieces fit, you know? And I tell the department heads all the time, the better job they do, the tougher job it is for us to put it all together. And, you know, they, they, they really do a good job of presenting things that are realistic, that are necessary or really a good opportunity. They don't put a lot of fluff in it. They don't put a lot of wild things in there that are wants, you know, that are just extravagant. So it makes it really difficult to make those choices. And in addition to the January planning session, these meetings in February, such as this one, is devoted to the budget discussions with city council. So issues of awareness and direction. So there's a few overriding or large items that I kind of wanted to go through with you. And the first is dealing with the grave resignation and the labor market and what's going on in there. We need to have an ongoing awareness of the national, state, and local economic indicators and their impact on the city budget. There's a lot going on at the federal level right now that's creating a lot of uncertainty. We have the inflation and how the feds will react. We know that they're looking at, at raising the discount rate is starting in March, and there's a lot of question about how many, how far they're gonna move it, and how many movements they're gonna have through the year, what effects that will have on the economy. And then, of course, we've got the Russia and Ukraine issues that are going on right now, and as I understand, Russia moved into some of those territories this morning. So not knowing what effects that will have. So there's a lot of uncertainty there. We need to continue to examine sales and use tax, watching for trim, monitor the capital improvements fund and the related debt service. As, again, from my perspective, all departments are critically important, but core services such as public safety and maintaining infrastructure have to remain a priority, just my personal belief, and I think council has sent that message several times, that one of the primary focuses or the first, our first responsibility of government is keeping the citizens safe. And, and so that, that has to be a priority. Continue to address the police and fire departments' legacy and other pension unfunded accrue liabilities, to address the market concerns of police recruitment. Continue the economic development push, building on past successes, and this includes the industrial and retail. And then be aware of the water and wastewater needs as we go forward. Housing needs have to catch up with the economic development, jobs creation. Again, the quantity, yes, but quality is, is, is more important or mostly important. Continue efforts to clean up Sedalia and find new and innovative methods, expand neighborhood revitalization and give more attention to results. The citizen engagement is key in many areas of this success. We should and must engage with our customers. We need to listen to them to determine what they want and then how can we deliver that. Council continues to send a clear message that neighborhood revitalization Again, the quantity, yes, but quality is more important or mostly important. Continue efforts to clean up Sedalia and find new and innovative methods, expand neighborhood revitalization and give more attention to results. The citizen engagement is key in many areas of this success. We should and must engage with our customers. We need to listen to them to determine what they want and then how can we deliver that. Council continues to send a clear message that neighborhood revitalization is A, if not B, top priority. So staff is hearing what you're saying, so we're trying to build budget and do other activities around that directing. Branding and comprehensive plan, as we talked, are serve as an umbrella, bringing it all together as well as a means to get there. What is our story provides the necessary focus. So as we look at the budget, first, we have to ask the question, do we want a balanced budget? And what is a balanced budget? And it's not mandatory that we do a balanced budget every year. Actually, what I think is important is what we call a structurally balanced budget and that ongoing revenues exceed ongoing expenditures. You can have, you know, years where you dip into your rainy day fund, where you dip into reserves and spend down reserves. You can have other years where you build reserves. So that is always a balance as to we don't want to get structurally out of balance where we've got ongoing expenditures that just build and we don't have an identified ongoing revenue source to offset those. The city has built and maintained a healthy fund balance. This has allowed us to weather a couple of the past storms, most particularly the recession, without disrupting services. Reserves were potentially spent down on infrastructure from FY12 through FY16. The addition of the use tax allowed a continued higher infrastructure spending rate over the next couple of years. And then the last few years, we've hit the point where we had to slow down spending increases. And now we're at the continued, we're at the point where we need to continue to focus on that fund balance and where we need to have that and, again, the structurally balanced. And that, to me, is where we balance the needs versus the available funds and sustainable spending. The fund balance policy, I won't go through that in much detail, but just as a review, in 14, the city adopted its first ever general fund balance policy. It's went through a couple of iterations, but right now, the policy is at 35, between 35 and 75%. Right now, we're at about 65%, very healthy improvement fund balance. So now to look at revenues or the sources of revenue, the local taxes make up 48% of our overall revenues, which with sales tax being the lion's share of that, and you all heard me say it several times here, sales tax drives the train. It's the revenue source that we pay the most attention to for this reason. It makes up 34% of our net revenues. The next largest source of revenues are service charges, which is 31%, and that's like this water and sewer fees, solid waste, the parks and recreation fees, the user fees, all of those kinds of things. So since we looked so much in detail at sales tax trend, looking back at history, this is about 12 years worth of history there. If you look in fiscal year 09, we had a large dip due to the recession, then started climbing back out in fiscal year 2012, another smaller dip in 13 through 14. And then FY15, we climbed back up to the point where we were actually had recovered from before the recession, six years earlier, at 4.7% above that. FY16, we started slow growth again. FY17, we took another dip and then it flattened. FY18 through 20, we had slow growth again. And then through FY20, we were at basically a 17.4% above our FY09 level. And so if you average that out, we have an average growth rate of 1.47% growth rate over the past 11-year span there. FY21, the increase there was really adding the 1.8 cent, and actually, we were relatively flat without that 1.8 cent in FY21. And then FY22, we've had the significant, and you'll hear again from Don, the update on the sales tax collections, they remain very good this year. So that's really recovery from the pandemic as well as the effects of inflation. When you look at sales tax and use tax put together, again, we are at 15.1% higher than the FY21, it's really the COVID recovery. Budgeted a 2% increase over the projected FY21 for FY22, so we're significantly above budget for this year. The use tax was approved in 2015, which accounts for about 7% of sales tax, so that has enabled us to do more. The 1.8 cent for Hecarri Community Center was started in FY21 and then the use tax is up 15.5%. And so the combined increase is 15.1% over FY21. And again, over the six-year period span there from when use tax was implemented to last year, we were up 4.25% over that six-year span. So again, looking at the national retail projections, I did a little research here in Bloomberg survey, 76 economists in early February, and those economists were expecting a 3.7% expansion in the economy for 2022. The Federal Reserve indicated an expectation of a 0.7% increase in the gross to mix product for the first quarter. So if you multiply that times four, you have, I'm sorry, got a mind block here. Yeah, 2.8%, thank you. I wanted to say 3.5 and I was like, no, that's, anyway. Mind block there, 2.8. Bloomberg also reported the consumer price index rose 7.5% in January year over year and that the consumer sentiment is expecting a 5% inflation over the next year. These reports all have the backdrop of the Federal Reserve is widely expected to tighten monetary policy and begin raising the discount rates in March as well as the continuing tensions with Russia. So in summary, we should expect expansion in the economy to level off, but with strong growth and inflation to slow, but some slums, but continue to slow. The state, I looked at their budget and what they were, their budget director and those folks are looking at. The state of Missouri's sales tax rose 15.6% for fiscal year to date, which is very similar to what we're experiencing. The revenue growth for fiscal year 2022 is expected to remain strong as the economic recovery continues, according to their budget director. And then continued with fiscal year 2022, resulting in an estimated 7% growth in the net general revenue. Also, a quote out of their budget report is the forecast for fiscal year 2023 reflects moderate revenue growth as the recovery transitions into a more typical business expansion cycle. Governor Parsons' fiscal year 2023 budget is based on a forecasted growth of 2.1% compared to the revised fiscal year 2022 estimate. So in summary, Missouri is projecting revenue to increase in the range of 7% through June, then slow to 2.1%. Because Sedalia and Pettis County is relatively self-contained and isolated from larger communities around us, the local jobs and wages have a really a more direct impact on our local sales tax revenue. We have enjoyed for several years what they call negative leakage. In other words, we have more people coming to our community to spend money than we have people leaving our community to spend their money elsewhere. If there are fewer jobs or lower wages, people don't have as many dollars to purchase goods and thereby fewer sales tax dollars are created. Conversely, when we have more wages and we have more sales, then we have more sales tax. This is offset somewhat by online sales, but the trend is still true that more payroll equals more local sales tax. Also, we have waifera legislation that's going to temper that a little bit. And we'll talk a little bit more about that later. The December unemployment in Pettis County was 2.5%, which is widely considered as full employment, near historic lows and down significantly from the high during the shutdown from the pandemic at 13% of April of 2020. During the last three years, again, as we reported and as Jessica reported in her annual report, we've created $80 million worth of added payroll and those wages are higher than the current average. So again, you've got more people spending more dollars. Despite the pandemic, some businesses continue to expand and the local economic development office has strong prospect lists for additional projects, encouraging a strong outlook for growing spending power. So in summary, the local unemployment rates and projections remain strong. So also, in June of 2021, waifera legislation was signed by the governor. This legislation brings Missouri in line with the rest of the state. Missouri, I believe, was the last state to pass legislation to enact that, establishing what they call NEXUS for online retailers selling goods in the state in accordance with the 2018 Supreme Court ruling on South Dakota versus Waifera. Generally, if a business sells more than $100,000 into the state, then they must start collecting use tax, including the local use tax for where the sale occurred. For Missouri, this law will not take effect until January of 2023. So in summary, it's difficult to predict the long-term effect of this legislation, but for fiscal year 2023, that will end in March, the impact will be minimal due to the effective date not to start until March 2. So bringing all that information together, what I'm predicting or what I'm suggesting or recommending is that for 2023, the city of Sedalia projects a 2% to a 4% growth in sales tax. And what I've done is I've put 2% into the draft and then also gave you the numbers and we'll bring that back to the budget work session Monday. And I'm going to recommend to you that we add it, take it up to 4% and as a way to get where I think we need to be on wages. Looking at that numerically, you can see going across here, this table has a lot of numbers on it, but it just gives you, showing across the columns, there's what we actually ended the year of fiscal year 2021 at, what the current budget, what we adopted in the current budget at a total of basically 15 million. And then 2022, we're projecting, projecting because of the 15.1% increase, basically 16.8 million, which is a $1.7 million increase over where we're at on the adopted budget. And then if you compare the FY22 projected versus the FY21 actual, it's about a $1.3 million increase. And so then you take that projected amount, add 2% to it, and you get the FY23 proposed at a total of 17 million, which is that 2% change that I talked about. And then when you go to this column here, I'm sorry, I forget, my mouse doesn't show you exactly where I'm pointing, but the FY23 proposed versus the FY22 adopted really represents what the budget increase is, which is going from the budget in FY22 to the budget or proposed budget for FY23 is a $2 million increase. When you look at the general fund, if you took the sales and the use tax together, it's about $656,000 projected over the budget. And then when you add in another $135,000 of the proposed versus the projected for next year, you get a $791,720 increase for the general fund. Now, as far as how we're allocating those resources, as with any service organization, personnel costs are a huge portion of our budget and they're also one of those things that it's an ongoing cost. So it's important to watch those trends and make sure that we're managing those within, that those are not increasing as fast as our revenues are increasing. And we're no exception. 74% of our total budget is personnel cost and especially in the general fund, it is a huge piece of our budget. And of course, public safety is the vast majority of our, by department. They're representing 59% of the total general fund expenditures. So considerations for the FY23 budget, I've just kind of listed out a few of the big items here that are included in the draft, are considered in the draft. $546,000 continue to offset the legacy plan for the police department. And then $250,000 estimate for the amortization of the 4.6 million unfunded liability in the firefighters retirement fund that would facilitate freezing that plan and then moving to loggers. Police recruitment incentives of $30,000. And then there was some requested operational increases or added staff with finance to add back a utility billing staff that we really decreased three or two, three, and then we're thinking we need to add back one. So that's where we're at. Safety officer, and then again, we'll go through all of this with the, in more detail during the budget work session, but just wanted to give you a feel here. A safety officer to really manage our safety program. And then city health department. And then fire added overtime for training and automatic fire call-in. And then wellness and screening initiatives. And then also to continue the contributions of the HSAs to try to focus more attention on managing healthcare costs. As far as wage rates, I thought it'd be good to go through some of the recent history or the movement. We've had wage adjustments over the past year. We participated in a study that was conducted by Warrensburg and we received the data for participating in it. We got some really good data. They had a comparable market basket. And also, one of the things that they did that I really liked with their study is that they had, they captured actual wage, not just the beginning and ending, which nobody was asked, so it didn't really matter. And as a result of that, it indicated at that time that we were overall not far off from the market. It also indicated some positions should be looked at, though. And so we made some adjustments in public safety within the FY19 budget and created a new position of corporal, added stipends and or moved detectives up with corporal and adjusted top end of many ranges and adjusted entry level positions and reduced the gap in initial steps. In 2020, we followed on with that with further adjustments. In public safety, we reduced or then eliminated the overlap that was created in the previous year with those adjustments made in 19. We adjusted the police sergeant scale. The equipment operators were all moved up one grade and that was essentially a 5% to 6% increase for each of those folks. And then a few other market and ripple effect adjustments. And then in fiscal year 2021, we made a 9% increase in law enforcement to bring them closer to market and market forces that were going on at that time. And then for the current year, we had the 1% cola and step increase for FY22. we had the 1% COLA and step increase for FY22, which was approximately a 3% average Wage rates going forward, again, we, this is something that I really struggled with as we were trying to put together the draft as far as how, how could we deal with the great resignation? And when that's overlaid with the inflation, we have severe market, up market pressures on upward pressure on wages. And just again, kind of looking at the phenomenon here, the city competes for labor in several diverse markets, segments that, that makes it difficult for us. And when we look at wages and benefits, historically, we have competed well with benefits for the public safety, which again, is majority of our workforce. We compete primarily with other governments that have similar benefit structures and similar wage amounts. However, for other sectors, we typically have significant better benefits, but lower in wages. And so we're able to, we're, have been historically been able to attract, retain career-minded employees. The recent pressures though, have changed the landscape. Low unemployment increased demand has put the private sector in a short-term bidding wars for labor. Even though we have significantly better benefits, we are competing with several businesses that are forced to throw cash at attracting the labor they need today. The cash being thrown around is even affecting the public safety sectors. Even though we remain competitive with other governments and wages and benefits, the private sector is looting potential employees called SER away with short-term pay. They're just throwing cash at it without benefits and, and it's, it's making them attractive to pull away. So whether this situation is sustainable or is questionable or not, but it is the reality of the current situation. If we change our structure to reduce the spend on benefits to allow more in wages, we will then find ourselves not able to compare with other governments. So that's kind of the dilemma that I see that we're in. Likewise, changing benefit structure would be a long-term strategy not quickly implemented or reversed. So how do we weather the storm while this plays out? With the past work in development of wage scales and adjustments, we are, we were in general at a good place, at a good balance that worked for us. It's where we were able to attract, like I said, in the, in the non-public safety, we were able, able to attract career-minded people that were interested in benefits that would, we'd be able to attract them and maintain and retain them. And in the public sector, we were very comparable to other communities. So we were at that right balance. Part of the challenge now though, is this knowing if the current situation is short or long-term and relatively how short or how long. Further, history tells us, tells us that the market disruptions of this magnitude do have some lasting effect. We just don't know what those will look like in the future. This would make an argument for not throwing the long-term strategies away at short-term problems. However, the short-term problems are real and we must take action. So what I suggest is a strategy that does what we can for the short-term problem to weather the storm while taking somewhat of a wait-and-see approach for the longer-term strategy. I don't see that we should really go to great lengths to change our structure, particularly our benefit structure, while we don't know what the long-term play of this is going to be. So what tools do we have available for us, right? And look at our past practices, we do still have the, the wage scales that are set out. And typically in the past, we've done a normal step increase for all employees for includes public safety on a different scale. The eligible employees advanced on a defined step on the current chart. The COLA or cost of living adjustment, as we call it, is basically a cross-the-board percentage increase for all employees. It moves or updates the whole wage scale. In the past, it's been relatively small as a way to augment the step increase, but it needs to be more substantial this year as a short-term measure to help keep us up with the market. I did look at waiting, waiting more at the entry level where the, the employees are more affected by inflation and, and where it's, it's a little more difficult to recruit employees. However, that has a complication of wage compression. And then it also, it, it creates the unknown of the longer-term effects that it would have and that would have to be corrected later. So again, I, I don't know what the long-term play is going to be, what the long-term strategy is going to be. So, so I opted for my recommendation to do it as a percentage across the board as opposed to weighting it lower on the lowering. So I tried to look at where do I start? What is the, what is the right amount? And I did a lot of looking at where our current employees are and basically the primarily, there's a few, few employees that are, that are less than this, but primarily our equipment operators are our entry-level positions and they're a little more than $13 now. So if I looked at what does it take to increase that from 13 to 14 or a dollar increase, a dollar divided by 13 is 7.7%, which if you remember those slides earlier, we were saying that January year over year was 7.5% inflation on the national level. So that's a little more than the inflation. The step increase is approximately 2%. For public safety, it's a little more than that, but for all other employees, it is 2%. So it, it averages just a little above 2%. And then, so therefore, if you take the 2% out of the 7.7 to get a total increase of 7.7, you'd need a COLA of 5.7% with the step increase to 2% to get you to that 7.7. So I did a little analysis here and again, just to drive that point home on what we're competing with versus our benefits versus the private sector. If you look at our current $13 an hour and trying to compete with the private sector that doesn't typically, I mean, doesn't pay 100% of the health insurance, and a lot of them now are not, they're, they're competing with, with pure cash. And then the pension plans, they can't compete with or they typically don't compete with. And that's about $3 for the employee, to average employee is about $3 an hour. So our $13 an hour and you're competing with the private sector is really about $19 an hour, but if you take it to 14, then we're at $20 an hour. So looking at that, from a financial standpoint, a normal step increase is about $290,000. The 5.7% COLA would be about $843,000 for a total of $1.1 million or for the general fund effect of $706,000. And just to break that out, the police would be to that quarter of million there and a fire would be about $200,000. Any comments? Any questions on any of that?
Were you able to figure out any way to compete with those that are offering the pure cash deal?
Not easily, not without disrupting our, our benefit structure, which would be difficult to do. Cause the biggest portion of that is, is the loggers and, and the retirement, which is the way loggers is, is, it's all we're messing. You have to have all of your employees over 1,500 hours. So we could go to more part-time employees as a strategy. We could contract more staff out, but you know, short of creating, disrupting the whole loggers and kind of deal, I, I didn't really see a good way to do that. And then health insurance, you know, is another big piece that a member could be in with. Now, we could make that more contributory to, to the employee, the current employee, that may make us, may help us recruit, but to the current employee is, it's a sweat pocket, right? And if you give it to them in health insurance, it's not that. You have to give them more so that they end up with the same amount. But it's, it's a struggle and I'm not sure I have all the answers.
I said when I was going to the health insurance didn't matter.
Yes.
Now it's not.
Yeah, give me the dollars. And unfortunately for me, that, that I wasn't interested in the pensions either. It's like, give it to me. I want to spend it. Retirement, I don't care about it. Moving on to the, to the capital improvement fund, our Fund 15, this is our, the primary capital improvement fund and it is where a lot of our infrastructure comes from. It's supported by 2/4% for a total of a half a cent sales tax. And not to belabor it, but in the history or in the past, we used to put a quarter of that or half of that sales tax into the, the sewer fund. And so a few years ago, we started an initiative to make the sewer fund stand on its own as it should as an enterprise fund. And it still allows council to make the conscious decision to allocate funds there for, for economic development, but it is a conscious decision instead of just an automatic allocation. Again, since this fund carries the debt service for past projects that we've done, we've got a first look at that debt service to give any consideration to, to new projects. So I've just done the summary here of the numbers here. Again, the sales tax is the majority of the revenue. We also get an allocation from the county road tax. Since Savelia is part of Pettis County, that there's an allocation there that comes back from Pettis County for that countywide sales tax for the streets in, in Savelia. That's $365,000. And then half of the stormwater use tax comes back into this to handle stormwater projects. And then I put in the grant funds, but then took that back out just to, to show you the ongoing revenues of about $4 million. And then we have about $3.3 million worth of debt service obligations from, for past, past deals. And, but then the Hecker Community Center is, is funded out of Sue's generous pledge. Her, her foundation covers the interest on a portion of that. And then the, for the next four or five years, the Savelia 200 for the increase in the, the competitive pool will offset, set a portion of that, that fund. And then the eight cents part sales tax comes in to this to, to offset that. So we have about $1.3 million worth of net. These about $2.7 million worth of available funding for new projects. Enterprise funds are different. And again, according to the generally accepted accounting principles, the city's financials are divided into what they call government-like and business-like activity. The theory being that tax dollars shouldn't go to business-type activities. The, the business-type activities should stand on their own, offer their own fee, but then they shouldn't, also the rate payer shouldn't be paying more than what it costs to provide that service as a, and that would be representative in fact. City has several business-like activities, namely the hospital, water department, water pollution control, the sewer service or the sanitation and solid waste. As you all know, we've been talking for quite some time here about the sanitation, cause a few years ago, that was buried in the general fund and it was not standing on its own. We were supplying a lot of tax dollars against that, that fund. And so we separated that into its own fund as an enterprise fund to show, highlight that and then to work on gradually moving it to where it's self-sufficient. We have been getting there. And again, this year, we are proposing another $1.50 increase per month for, for individual. But then we looked at the, the burden that that would put on senior citizens with their, that potentially on our fixed income. And so we increased the discount to where they would go to a $3 discount. And so their increase would only be 50 cents. Still an increase, but we have to get this to where it is standing on its own. You can see that the current operating revenues are over the expenditures by about $284,000. But then when you add the depreciation back to that as non-cash, you can, you generate about $480,000, $4,000. But then the capital expenditures paying off the leases on the equipment and the carts is $493,000. And so we have again budgeted a cash loss of $8,742. So basically a break even. But then as I circle down there at the bottom, we have an ongoing or that results in an operating deficit of $324,000 or actually an overall deficit of $324,000 that we still have to, to pay back at some point. So at the end, overall, I, I put together, here's what the draft looks like today. The general fund, as you can see, I'm projecting with what I've got in the draft and we'll go through those in detail and, and decision items with you tomorrow, or Monday. But right now, what I've got in the draft is, represents a 62% fund balance, which is a loss or spending down some of that, that fund balance, but, but still a healthy fund balance, still well within our, our fund balance policy. So if you want to approve just exactly what I've drafted, then we can make that work. But then again, I'll have several items that we can add to, subtract from, change around, put this in, take that out, all of that to, for you to, to decide. The capital improvements fund, I highlighted there that going from a $16 million fund balance to a $4 million fund balance to a $1.2 million fund balance is really timing of the loan and the community center project. The Midtown Special Allocation Fund, the Downtown PIP, again, going from $510,000 down to a $40,000 fund balance. That was really an advance for the streetscape and that's paying back the, the capital improvements fund for that investment. Sanitation fund, as I mentioned, where we have an operating deficit of 1.4 million, going to 1.5 million, down to 1.2 million. And then down at the bottom, I'm showing you the, the unspendable portion of that so that you can see where that 300 and some thousand dollars net comes from. Finally, the conclusion or what's next is we've got a budget work session scheduled for Monday. At that time, some of the issues here discussed will, will presented for a decision. And then if desired by council, other work sessions will be scheduled and a public hearing, which we encourage public input. Anybody that wants to weigh in on the budget is on the 21st. And then the council will consider adoption of the 23rd, FY23 budget on March 21st after the hearing. But then if council wants to deliberate any further, we have really up until March 31st. If council wants to take more time and, and we can schedule more meetings and, and come back and, and as long as we adopt it before March 31st, we're, we're good to go. Be happy to entertain any questions or any direction, anything that you all want to see changed or something.
Was it first the council?
I missed a couple things. Can we go over it again?
Sure.
I think we'll do everything.
If we do, we're gonna call off for pizza if we do. Yeah, we'll go through it Monday. So Dawn's up next, I think for the monthly, um, update on our tax revenues.
That was fascinating. That's my, my wheelhouse.
That's her stuff.
Yeah. Yes. Well, um, the sales tax revenue for the month is up 3, 37.5% from the prior month. Use tax is up 30- Use tax is up 36.8% from the prior month. Franchise and cigarette taxes are down 0.6% from the prior month. Property tax collections are up 11.1%. And, no, I got off the line. Transportation taxes up 11.1% from the prior month and property tax collections are up 11.6%. Overall, our current month totals are up 19.2% from the prior month. Fiscal year-to-date, as Kelvin talked about, and the sales tax is up 15.1% from this time last year. Use tax is up 15.5% from this time last year. Franchise and cigarette tax is down 3%. Transportation tax is up 11.6%. Property tax collections are up 5.1%. And overall, fiscal year-to-date totals are up 11.2% from the prior year. Any questions?
The sales tax would be for December sales?
Yes.
I did look back and that was a record month for it. I look back, I think over the last 10 years, that was by far the highest month for December sales.
Local shopping.
So it's good, Chris.
Thank you.
You're done.
Thank you, Dawn.
Thank you, Dawn. I'll keep on working. I'm earning my money tonight. Third item that I have to deal with, the finance, city utilizes Microsoft Exchange Server 2010 as a software package that manages our email communications. Since this software is out of date, no longer supported by Microsoft, they do not release security patches for it. This significantly increases our cybersecurity risk, further our cyber insurance. Carriers are now requiring multi-factor authentications, which is not achievable in our current version. Therefore, staff recommends upgrading to a newer version. However, the latest version is only sold on a subscription basis that would greatly increase the annual cost. Staff recommendation is to purchase the newest version that still allows perpetual licensing, which is Microsoft Exchange 2019 at a cost of $16,180.98. Any questions, council? Are they going to read the orders, please?
Bill number 2022-23, an ordinance accepting a quote for the purchase of Microsoft Exchange 2019 email software.
Second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bill number 2022-23, an ordinance accepting a quote for the purchase of Microsoft Exchange 2019 email software.
Final passage.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
And Bliss?
Yes.
All in favor?
Another item, Mr. Mayor, the antivirus software the city uses to protect networks is due for renewal. The current software package is SULPA and their designated vendor for sales support is Blue Tree Technology. Due to complexities of how all our networks and hardware are intertwined with the firewalls and antivirus software, changing to a different system would be a large task and expensive. Staff therefore recommends that for practical purposes, this should be considered as a sole source vendor relationship in accordance with our procurement policies. The quote for renewal is under budget at $7,275.45 and staff recommends approval of the sole source purchase. Any discussion, council? Read the orders, please.
Bill number 2022-24, an ordinance accepting a quote for a one-year contract renewal of desktop and server antivirus software.
Second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Bill number 2022-24, an ordinance accepting a quote for a one-year contract renewal of desktop and server antivirus software.
Final passage.
Roll call, please.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
All in favor?
Fifth item, in accordance with best practices, we conduct a comprehensive review each year at this time of our established financial management policies. During her review, Dawn Jennings, Finance Director, noted a lack of clarity between budget adjustments versus budget amendments. Therefore, she has recommended some added language to make it more clear what a budget adjustment is, along with the approval process. I came in today and talked to Kelvin for a minute about this particular one. And Kelvin, would you please clarify, clarify for me today the difference between a budget adjustment and a budget amendment? And would you please go through what you told me this morning?
Sure. A budget amendment, again, the council by ordinance adopts a budget which represents the appropriation or appropriating the fund for those purposes. And so when we want to change that appropriation, either increase the expenditure or change the functions that we're appropriating funds for, that requires an amendment. That requires, the only way to change an ordinance is by another ordinance. So that represents a budget amendment. However, when you appropriate, let me just pick on Fire Department for, you appropriate so much money for the Fire Department, for that department. And the general functions, as we're going to go through the budget work session Monday and go through all of that. And so you've got these kinds of things, this relative level of service and this amount of equipment, this amount of staff, those kinds of things. But then throughout the year, let's say that they're over in office supplies, but under in vehicle maintenance. They can adjust that or we can adjust that within the appropriation and within the spirit of an intent of the appropriation. We're still providing the same function within the same amount of money that you appropriated, but we just are able to move that from one line item to cover an over-budget situation with an under-budget situation. And rather than bringing that back to council, we can just make those on the fly and make those simple so that the budget does become a financial management tool so that they know next month, when they look at the financial statements, that, hey, this is how I plan on staying within my appropriation for the whole year. But again, staying within the spirit and the intent on the total appropriation.
And it is standard accounting practice.
Yes.
So my only concern with that is like, what was driving the juniper night with the increasing our budget for the, what was it, our disposal track?
Mm-hmm.
So that's important information for me to have a decision on when they're coming in to increase our rates. And so that's kind of what I think the first important thing to be a part of.
Yeah, and that's why it is. Because we are actually increasing the appropriation. And so that requires an amendment and would still, even under these revised policies. What we're talking about is within sanitation, let's say, if they were $1,000 over on this line item and $2,000 under on this line item, then we could move $1,000 to cut that over. But not increasing the total of appropriation, nor within the spirit and the intent. And like, let's say that we budgeted for a piece of equipment. And, yeah, and, you know, I'll pick on, what, he went? I was going to pick on Earl. And let's say that he says, ah, no, I don't want to buy that piece of equipment. I want to give races all back. No, that's not within the spirit and intent of the appropriation. We can't do that. But this is just basically managing the budget within the appropriation and part of the appropriation is the spirit of the function.
Yeah, I guess I just don't like the idea, the spirit and intent seems very ambiguous.
That was my question. Who defines the spirit of intent or intent? The spirit of intent? Who kind of defines that? Because the equipment, piece of equipment in firefighters' equipment, you know, who, and that's very, very broad, I know, but who determines that?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's basically what you guys have said, is the intent of the appropriation. You want these functions, this is what we presented to you, that we're going to accomplish these functions within this amount of money. We can't change that without coming back and talking to you. If we, but if we're still accomplishing that and it's a little more for this line but a little less for that line, then that's just giving the latitude. And that's what's in the current policy. We're just adding third to the budget adjustment in the current policy. But I don't know if that makes sense. If you all want that, we can bring everything back to council. But I suggest that that's going to put us in a position to where they won't do it. It won't be a management, you know, it's just, I'm in the under in toll, so I'll just be over in one and under in another and just continue on.
I'll tell you kind of how this came to be.
He is the one.
Yeah, I heard that.
There's actually a couple of examples, but he is the first one that we would actually use this on. But how this came up and when Kelvin and I started talking about it is what comp premiums came in higher this year than anticipated. Health insurance costs went up. Department heads are then expected to ideally lessen your expenses in other areas. If you can cut back in another area, let's use some of that money to help offset some of that cost. It's just clerical stuff that we would take care of, things that they're already doing that would just make it look cleaner. His example has to do with training. What's the other side of that? What are we moving, we talked about moving something to training, if I remember.
Using the hiring incentives to play for the police academy. So again, it's accomplishing the same function, but the hiring incentives are coded in the line item for wages. And so, and training is a completely different line item. So we would make a budget adjustment to move that money from the wages line item to the training line item to accomplish the same function, the same spirit and intent council appropriated the funds.
And that's done within the same total appropriation.
But also the same funding there.
Yes, same department.
You can't cross.
Correct. At the end of the year, he's not going to have any more money or any less money. He's just got an ability to manage his department.
Correct.
With the same spirit and intent as he presented to us. You can't, with any kind of budget, throughout the year, you can't, you know, fuel costs, for instance, right now. When we did the budgeting last year, no way we could, I don't think, we could have anticipated whatever it is now, $1.5, $2 more for fuel. It gives them the ability to look for some other place where they save money to spend more money on fuel.
And I don't want them, you know, I've encouraged since I've been here and when I started, there was a little bit of this going on, but it's, you know, again, we're very successful in getting that. There's a tendency that if you make the rules too stringent, then they try to budget for, well, in case I need it, you know? And so they try to build fluff in to their budget, which is not a good financial management tool. I want them to have the flexibility to where you budget for your best guess. And then if there's a problem, if the unexpected does happen, then you've got the ability to manage within that to make up for it or come back to council and say, hey, the unexpected come up, we suggest a budget amendment to increase the appropriation.
I think it makes the, my perspective, it makes the department as a better manager, better fiscal managers. They can make decisions relative with their own budget. And definitely, I think, in the assessment.
And Dawn, you're trying to improve definition of things according to best practice, right?
And to make their.
The difference, really, to clearly state to the people that manage our departments, what is an adjustment and what is an amendment?
And to make their financial statements clear, not to have to remember, oh, I was cleaning, I'm doing this because I spent last year. But you know, it'll just be done quickly, timely, early in the year, put in the recent problem.
When we, as staff and council and mayor sit down with the department heads, Kelvin's really arguing about those department heads taking the fluff out of that prospective budget. I mean, and it's been every year, it's been obviously really improved. I think the department heads expect that, that they're fiscal. And Steve says with the inflation of petroleum, gasoline is something that we need to, we have in the natural gas costs, those kinds of things, probably something that will add on that.
Is there a way to do this to where it's not so daunting that they don't want to do it, but at the same time keeps us in the loop as to what's going on?
Keep the gas.
Yeah, that's, I mean, because that's, I mean, the budget, that's the most important thing we do and we need to stay in the loop as to what's going on. I mean, or.
Give the example of increased fuel prices. That's something I think that we should know that's happening.
Or is there a amount?
We can do a summary of adjustments every month.
Or is there an amount we can decide on that says if the adjustment needs to be a grand, you've got permission to do that. But if it's $5,000 or $10,000, then it has to come through the approval of council.
You're going to be sitting here till 1:00 a lot of times.
Yeah, I guess what I would recommend is if we want to go that direction, I would just recommend that we do a report. Because this is happening now. You know, you guys get reports on the department, you get a sum number in your audit report, you know? So if you want line item summary or line item detail, we can start providing that and then we can just do a report.
And so it's not involved, the questions within that additional staff member because it's vital. Because at the line item level, that's usually not what council is interested in or interested in overall. But I'll be happy to get you that.
You know, you could almost, if you get into this too deep, for one, you're getting into what I would consider micromanaging.
Yeah.
For one step. Number two, if you're going to get that deep into it, you're going to be sitting here for a long time. And the third part of that is, why do we have department managers then?
So I guarantee, the third is going to be a few within the department heads is going to come, it's going to surface pretty quickly. I know that Dawn is talking, communicating with Kelvin, they're aware of what's happening.
We approved the definitions. It's less likely to happen in the future, it's probably more likely to happen now. That's, remember, this is an improvement of definition according to best practice. So currently doing it, we're improving the definitions. Kelvin, did you have something?
Simply, I was going to just add that, you know, in other cities, you know, this type of detail is not typically handled by the full council. At the highest level, it would maybe be handled by a finance committee, usually just through a reporting requirement. So, you know, and again, I think the points that were made about, you know, getting too far into the weeds for the council is a reality here because council is supposed to be more, you know, the big picture and not the day-to-day.
Joe, how often is the finance committee reviewing those reports in other cities?
In some cities, it's typically, you know, either a monthly meeting or it might be a meeting that precedes their council or Board of Alderman meeting, you know, maybe by a couple of days or something like that.
Okay.
It's an idea that essentially that.
Do we have any, is the council finance meeting right now?
The subset of the council has their hand on the, has their finger on the pulse of the situation as opposed to the. the situation as opposed to the entire council.
Is the council finance committee meeting right now?
No, we're not, but we will if you want to do that. If you want us to, I assume it'd be you and I, and I don't want to speak to you.
Yeah, certainly.
Who's the third?
Uh, we could visit you. We haven't had, we haven't had meetings, so.
We can start meeting if you want to, and do that, that's true.
I would.
Oh, no, it's Bob.
I would, I would also point out that, you know, basically your staff, you know, basically your, your finance director has a fiduciary responsibility to the board, and basically her, her responsibility is call balls and strikes. And, and so her, her responsibility to you all is if, if something nefarious is going on, or if somebody's hiding, hiding football on you, then, then she has an obligation to report to you, so.
Are we able to read the ordinance, please?
Bill number 2022-25, an ordinance adopting revised financial management policy and repealing ordinance number 11341.
Second reading, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Bill number 2022-25, an ordinance adopting revised financial management policy and repealing ordinance number 11341.
Final passage. Second.
Roll call, please.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Here.
Foster?
No.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Okay. We have seven yes and one no.
Let me get back to my place. Item six, I think, John?
Yes, sir.
During your, oh, okay, I remember what it is now. During our January 18th meeting, we approved the amendment to extend the contract with Tipton Correctional Facility for the work release program. Department of Corrections requested a wording change in the ordinance to clarify the agreement is to provide up to 15 workers per day, that was inadvertently left out of the previous ordinance. So it's a small correction to what we've already passed, and staff recommends approval.
Any council discussion? Are we able to read the ordinance, please?
Bill number 2022-26, an ordinance amending, ordinance number 11500 to amend working regarding, amend wording regarding the number of worker offenders to state up to 15 worker offenders per day provided by Tipton Correctional Center.
Second reading, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Bill number 2022-26, an ordinance amending ordinance number 11500 to amend wording regarding the number of worker offenders to state up to 15 worker offenders per day provided by Tipton Correctional Center.
Final passage.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
And Dawson?
Yes.
All in favor?
Public safety, councilwoman Bogus.
Um, there's two items for consideration through the public safety committee tonight. As indicated in the strategic planning session for property maintenance, code enforcement, and animal control, these departments would like to add the capabilities of electronic ticketing, um, excuse me, implemented by the police department this year. These systems are much more effect, efficient and eliminate duplication of effort. With the current paper version of ticketing, the officer has to write out the citation with the correct coding, submit it to the staff that has access to the electronic court filing system to enter for the prosecutor to review and submit to the court. The electronic process not only automates the process of issuing the citation, but also eliminates the need for manually keying it in later. The costs are included in each department's budget proposal that will be coming before you for approval over the next couple of meetings. Due to the lead time involved in the implementation, staff recommends proceeding with the approval of a contract with these don't budget implement implications in mind at this time. The total upfront cost, one-time expenditure for this project is $19,249, and the annual ongoing fee is $2,578.
Any council discussion? Are we able to read the ordinance?
Bill number 2022-27, an ordinance authorizing an agreement for the implementation of Brazos Solution e-ticketing software and associated hardware for code enforcement and animal services.
Second reading, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Bill number 2022-27, an ordinance authorizing an agreement for the implementation of Brazos Solution e-ticketing software and associated hardware for code enforcement and animal services.
Second, final passage. Second.
Roll call, please.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
All in favor?
The second item for tonight is in connection with the recent acquisition of our newest K-9. Staff recommends approval of an agreement with the Boone County Sheriff's Office to provide customized training for K-9 Rocky and his handler, Officer John Hammond. The training is expected to be spread over an eight-week period with not less than 40 sessions of eight hours each. The total cost, $3,600 for this essential training.
Any council discussion? Are we able to read the ordinance, please?
Bill number 2022-28, an ordinance authorizing a cooperative agreement for K-9 basic training services between the city of Soudaya, Missouri, Soudaya Police Department, and the Boone County Sheriff's Office.
Second reading, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Bill number 2022-28, an ordinance authorizing a cooperative agreement for K-9 basic training services between the city of Soudaya, Missouri, Soudaya Police Department, and the Boone County Sheriff's Office.
Final passage.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Wolf.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
All in favor? One wolf.
All right.
Well, the work, chairman.
First item I have tonight is a budget amendment. Uh, we need to increase the budget, budgeted expenditures for the sanitation department. This is for the vehicle repairs and landfill charges. This will be a total amount of $56,406.40. We'll need to, uh, call for a resolution and call for an ordinance on this.
Any discussion on the resolution?
Just a quick question, the, the agreement we have with waste management, is that not a yearly contract, or is this a time that we reduce?
It's a three-year contract.
Okay.
And it allows for an adjustment between two and four percent per year.
Per year, okay. Thank you.
Are we able to read the resolution, please?
Resolution 1954, a resolution authorizing an increase in budgeted, budgeted expenditures for the fiscal year 2122 relating to the vehicle and equipment repair and parts and landfill expenses for the sanitation department.
Second reading.
Second.
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Now, would you read the ordinance, please, ugly?
Bill number 2022-29, an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2122 regarding the vehicle and equipment repair and parts expenses and the landfill charges of the sanitation department.
Second reading.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Bill number 2022-29, an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2122 regarding the vehicle and equipment repair and parts expenses and the landfill charges of the sanitation department.
Final passage.
Second. Roll call, please.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
All in favor?
The second item I have is for a city code update, and please forgive me, my notes are in my dead laptop right behind me, so I'm going to go off of the notes here on the sheet. Um, as part of the city's primitive process related to sewer systems with the Department of Natural Resources, we submitted the required evaluation report. In order to ensure compliance with such permits, we must establish limits on industrial contributors to share in the established local discharge limitations. Now that the review is complete, staff recommends codification of their updated local discharge limitations.
And, what's the council? Are we able to read the ordinance, please?
Bill number 2022-30, an ordinance amending section 60-95 through 60-108, 60-123 through 60-136, 60-160 through 60-163, and 60-195 through 60-199 of the code of ordinances of the city of Soudaya, Missouri related to sewers and local limits.
Second reading, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Bill number 2022-30, an ordinance amending section 60-95 through 60-108, 60-123 through 60-136, 60-160 through 60-163, and 60-195 through 60-199 of the code of ordinances of the city of Soudaya, Missouri related to sewers and local limits.
Final passage, second.
Roll call, please.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
All in favor?
Third item, we need to approve a renewal of a one-year contract with Alliance Water Resources. That is in a total of amount of $218,300, $218,376.
Any, any, what's the council? Are we able to read the ordinance, please?
Bill number 2022-31, an ordinance authorizing a professional services agreement between the city of Soudaya, Missouri and Alliance Water Resources Incorporated for operational oversight, maintenance, and management of wastewater facilities and collection system.
Second reading, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Bill number 2022-31, an ordinance authorizing a professional services agreement between the city of Soudaya, Missouri and Alliance Water Resources Incorporated for operational oversight, maintenance, and management of wastewater facilities and collection system.
Final passage.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
And Bliss?
Yes.
All in favor?
Roll call, I'm not thinking in power because I'm not asking for questions on the public.
We were dozing there, weren't we?
We have a lot of extensions on both of us. Next, John.
Uh, the fourth item I have tonight is with the development near Tenth and Mitchell. The traffic advisory committee is advising the city council to approve a stop sign at the intersection of Tenth and Mitchell.
I have a question. So, we will have three stop signs on Tenth and Mitchell?
Just one. Just one on Mitchell, stopping at one side.
On the, on the east side?
No.
Not in the north part coming out of the alley?
No. Southbound traffic on Mitchell will stop.
Oh, okay.
One side.
Okay.
This is much easier to do than we had on the other. So I, uh, debated it for four years. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Read the ordinance, please.
Bill number 2022-32, an ordinance establishing a stop sign on Mitchell Road at the intersection of West Tenth Street.
Second reading.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Bill number 2022-32, an ordinance establishing a stop sign on Mitchell Road at the intersection of West Tenth Street.
Final passage.
Second. Roll call, please.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
And Lehman?
Yes.
All in favor?
I think I've spent enough money tonight, sir.
You know what, you didn't say it, you know.
I did not say it.
Thomas, thank you.
Thank you.
And it does, it finishes over.
Alliance is really pretty expensive.
Well, I'm surprised you didn't get a question.
The, uh, first item on the agenda is a resolution. The resolution before you, uh, is authorizing the submission of a marketing heritage and cultural tourism in rural Missouri grant application. Downtown Alley 49 is going to be submitting this grant. Uh, what it is, is it's a $5,000 grant, we're going to be matching that with an additional $5,000 that ups our probabilities of receiving that grant, uh, and for a total of $10,000, and they're going to be using that for downtown alley revitalization.
Motion to approve.
Next. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I probably need to read the title first.
Eh.
Just for formality. A resolution supporting.
Yeah, that's how much weight she's got.
Okay. A resolution supporting the submission of a marketing heritage and cultural tourism in rural Missouri grant application for downtown alleyway revitalization.
I'll do it again.
I'll second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Next time we have on the agenda is a, a potential alternate location for the Mercy Rest Stop, so I'm going to defer to community development council committee member, uh, Kelvin and Bogus to take a service.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson. At the present time, we are trying to work with the Mercy Rest Stop in offering, um, an alternate place, uh, other than on the West Benton Street in which they are proposing. We have one other location that we have talked about, however, we're going back to the board to look at other locations. We want to make sure that the community understands we are not against the Mercy Rest Stop as it has been reported. We are definitely understanding and know that this is something that is needed in the Soudaya area. We're just trying to make sure that it's placed in the correct area of the Soudaya city limits so that it can be utilized by those who truly need to have the services that they plan to offer. So, um, we're going to be coming back to the table with, um, council members with a couple of other places that may work better than the West Benton Street, uh, position that they're, they're all, they're wanting to build at. So, um, again, we just want to get it out there that we are not against the Mercy Rest Stop. That is a falsification that's out there. We are not against that, but we do want to work with them in helping find another platform that would be more adequate, uh, for the purposes in which they're trying to open the Mercy Rest Stop.
In a good job, appreciate it. We've, we've had some good meetings and had a successful meeting. Mrs. Allen, sure, come on Sunday.
I second that, and I appreciate, uh, Councilwoman Bogus' leadership in this particular project.
Yeah.
Liquor licenses are linked?
Okay, this evening we have one new license, Liz Dan Lear, doing business with Sacred Heart Foundation, annual fun drive trivia night, February 26, 2022, at 416 West Third Street for a picnic license, and we have two renewals, Scott Hewitt, doing business at Colton Steakhouse and Grill, 4101 West Broadway, Liquor by the Drink and Sunday
the Drink in Sunday Sales, and Christopher Robinson, Doing Business at O Sage Gun and Pawn, 116 West Main Street for a packaged liquor.
Motion to approve and block.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Anybody from the council, want to make a comment? Go ahead.
I think I said enough.
I have a question here for the audience to see if that has happened to anyone besides me. My wife is very angry.
Who's angry?
My Christmas present to her is sitting on a cargo ship out in the Pacific Ocean somewhere. Has that happened to anybody else except me?
I normally buy it there.
That's what you get for buying stuff online.
Buy locally, you don't have to.
Does it happen to you, too?
No, I said buy locally, you don't have to.
Okay.
Anybody from out here, would you like to say a few words today? Thanks for coming.
I motion during the closed-door session for legal advice and real estate.
Thank you.
Go ahead, please.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
And Bliss?
Yep.
Yeah, well, I left the pencil down here.